Good morning, I'd like to call the July 9th meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission is now in session. Let the record show that all of the commissioners are here with us this morning, as well as staff. And at this point, I would like to ask you to join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes today?
No, there are not.
Okay. We will now move on to our public comment period, so if there's anybody in the audience this morning that would like to address the Planning Commission on a land use issue that is not on our agenda this morning, now would be the time.
Some comments, and I thank the board for all you're doing. And to the community, I say, the board-
Excuse me, sir, could you state your name?
Huh?
Your name for the record.
Mike Preston.
Mike, thank you.
And what we're trying to do is get this county up and running after 22 years of no-growth policies of former supervisors, which has gotten us into an $8.3 million hole, and the future's kind of bleak at the moment. The foothill conservancy being led by an attorney from Amador County, which is not surprising, given the fact that the business will be a great asset to Amador County if it leaves Calaveras County. Socialist-leaning foothill conservatives should not be allowed to dictate policy, especially on a countywide basis when 22% of the county is owned by the public and 50% of the county is mountainous, and that's where the 22% of the public properties are, is above 3,000 feet, where the county derives a percentage of revenue from the recreation dollars spent on our public lands and people building second homes and large retirement communities enjoying the fine climate at 4,000 feet elevation, not 669 of Valley Springs. In dealing with this $8.3 million debt, the past 20 years, it seems like the districts have been doing battle with each other. And it's time that, I think we got together all districts and moved as a county. If you look at Amador County and Tooleme County, they're in the black big time. They have very little bickering amongst districts. They tend to get along, and it works, obviously. Let me see, what else? Failed projects, there's a litany of failed projects to illustrate this over the last 22 years, or 23 now. Darby Apple Ranch, which was 66 lots, only which 33 were developed, there's four whole houses there. Forest Meadows 3, which was 313 lots, didn't happen. Avery Woods, 119 lots with a championship PGA golf course. San Antonio Drainage, same deal, but two golf courses, and all other recreation things such as bicycling, esquarian, stuff like this. The golf course in Meadowmont, due to a ruling by a board, forced it into bankruptcy, it is no more. There's approximately 50 businesses gone out of the Arnold area, well, I should say from Hathaway to Arnold, Avery and Arnold.
Mr. Preston-
And I would venture a guess right now that Arnold is probably 80% empty in commercial space. That may be a little high.
Mr. Preston-
It was 75 years ago, yes.
Mr. Preston, you've got about a minute left. Could you wrap up your comments?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would hope that the board would move forward with the supervisors and rejuvenating our business community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morning. I guess you're going to talk about this, oh, we're going to talk about this asphalt plant first, is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record?
Eric Morgan, I live in Valley Springs.
Thank you.
And I'm a resident of-
Okay.
I live on Stone Rapids.
We have one item before the discussion of the asphalt plant.
Oh, I thought you was already to two.
No, we're not there yet.
You don't want to comment on asphalt?
Well, you might want to wait.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yes, okay. Yeah, we just haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Joel Kelly, from the unrepresented area of District 1, not you, Mr. Allred, your boss. I'd like to see, perhaps you folks later could include into project approvals that you do for parcel maps specifically, that when you come out and you say it needs a 60-foot wide road easement, that you specifically put in there, all fences move back to that 60-foot easement. You would take away one hell of a lot of problems in this county, because we've gone forever and there's 18-foot wide roads or cow paths on a 60-foot wide easement that isn't there because people refuse or don't want to put fences up. New people move in, they remove their fence to take down the old barbed wire and put up all these nice panel fences in the same place, because they never read their map. You folks need to do this and make sure that the people understand. There are regulations, there are easements, and make them abide by it. Make it so it is enforceable by code enforcement or any other government agency that might have that ability. With that, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Suzette Glanville. My husband and I have Gold Country Real Estate. We've been in the business about 26 years and in the county about that long. We were both raised by entrepreneurs, and so we have this heartfelt feeling that the American dream should live on. So with that, I'm wondering how we get out of this $8.3 million debt without bringing in revenue to our county? How do we keep our children here and grandchildren? We have graduates of high school and college. The college ones have to leave and go to college and come back, we hope. Our graduates of high school, we hope, would like to stay here too. They're forced out also, the job factor is just not there for them. I have people come up to me, my age, our ages, and say, wow, guess what, our kids are moving back. Well, every once in a while, a few of them get lucky and get a teaching job, they might get to work at government center, there's some professional jobs. But we tend to be pushing back, and in the years we've been in the area, the pushback's been amazing. There doesn't seem to be the availability to our youngsters to have hope to find a job. And when the supervisor board changed up recently, I got this impression that there was going to be more of an attitude of Calaveras is open for business. And I'm really encouraged with that feeling. If we don't take on more business and entrepreneurs and make it a user-friendly county, are we going to continue in debt? Probably. I just am really confused on the thinking. If you don't have revenue, you don't get out of debt. So, long story short, I'm hopeful that you will look kindly and seriously and in a smart fashion to bringing more business in. It's a shame we have to go to other counties to buy shoes, underwear. I've had people say, I can't even get my underwear here in this county. So, something has to change there, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for just some basic needs that people have. So, I guess the bottom line is let's get cracking and let's bring in some really good, smart business. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to be moving on then to the consent agenda, and the item there is the approval of the minutes from the June 25th Planning Commission meeting. Are there any revisions, corrections? I might say, Annette, they were the longest, I think, I've ever, ever seen.
Tell me about it.
Yeah. And I just want to tell you, I mean, there may be some, you know, corrections, but, you know, I think you did a, you know, it's giving the volume a very good job. So, are there corrections, revisions?
We did receive some grammatical corrections, the spelling error corrections, from Commissioner Wooster, and those have been incorporated into the revised minutes, but there's no substantive changes that were provided.
Okay. Well, with that, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. Minutes approved. So next, we are moving on to our first public hearing, which is 2015-040 Appeal and 2015-007 Zoning Amendment Administrative Use Permit for La Contenta Plaza LLC. And they are requesting approval to rezone a portion of an existing building from C1, which is local commercial, to CP Professional Office for consideration of an administrative use permit to legitimize the existing medical cannabis dispensary that's been operating in the subject property without a permit since 2013. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gina.
Good morning. Don't really have a PowerPoint presentation, which I know you're normally expecting. Just a few slides in the event that you want to see them, but everything is pretty much already in your packet. The reason we're here today is because we have an application in-house for which we are to consider the request for a rezone of the existing property. Actually, they're requesting to rezone a portion of an existing building in addition to an administrative use permit to allow the existing dispensary that's been in place since 2013. Upon review of the application, staff determined that there was an inability for the property to meet the minimum locational standards called out in code. At that point, we made the applicant and landowner aware of the inability to meet the minimum requirements, and our recommendation at that point was going to be to deny the application. In a nutshell, they filed what we would consider to be an appeal of that determination, stating that they felt that there should be special consideration given to their particular situation because Highway 26 actually separates the early head start, which is considered to be a sensitive use, and their dispensary, indicating that that highway separation would in fact kind of void out the, if you will, the distance requirement. The code is very specific as to how we are to measure the distance. Maybe back it up a little bit. The requirement actually is set forth in code that indicates that you must maintain, or I should say, you have to stay at least 1,000 feet from a number of uses. Schools, they call out elementary, middle school, high school. In addition, they call out parks and youth establishments. And through that, we determined that the early head start building was a youth-oriented establishment, therefore, you know, shall have at least 1,000-foot distance. The actual required, the actual distance between the existing dispensary and the early head start building is less than 650 square feet, not square feet, 650 feet, therefore not meeting that 1,000-foot minimum requirement. So with that, our recommendation automatically was to deny. I think the applicant wishes to basically state why they think that special consideration needs to be sought out for this particular situation, so I do believe they are here today to argue that. But as far as staff is concerned, there is no other way of figuring the distance requirement. It's very clear, code calls it out very specifically, and we don't think that there's any exception to that specific rule. In addition, they are requesting for split zoning. And even though we are looking right now at the distance requirement, we also have to take action on the zoning amendment as well. So formal action needs to be taken on both the administrative use permit and the zoning amendment. And just as we've discussed before, this is a request for split zoning. And split zoning, for reasons that we've discussed before, is problematic. There is no way to delineate actual zoning boundaries if they're not attached to a property boundary. In addition to, it creates the possibility of incompatible uses within a single piece of property, and it's just basically bad planning. As we've said before, we do have split zoning in the county. It's not like it's illegal to have split zoning. It's not something that we've done probably in the last 20 years. I did do some research on the split zoning that we do have in the county and found some very legitimate reasons for that split zoning. A lot of times, we will have zoning that will be applied to tentative subdivision maps that are approved, and until that tentative map is actually recorded and the new boundary lines are delineated, then we don't have any boundary lines to sort of snap that zoning to. So until the map gets recorded, we have nothing more than split zoning on a single piece of property. That's one situation that we have in the county with split zoning. Another I found was zoning, split zoning was occurring up and down the Highway Ebbets Pass corridor. And quite some time ago, these were all zoning amendments that were, most of them were very early on in the, in planning years, way before my time. And what we found was that everything along the corridor of Highway 4 was zoned highway service with the intention that maybe some commercial, you know, that was the commercial corridor, and perhaps commercial business would be welcome. The parcels then would have a split zoning in the rear with the unclassified zoning. Over time, we've created new zone districts, and no one's ever come back and rezoned those parcels to something more specific. So we do have split zoning in the county. As I said before, most have some kind of a legitimate reason as to why the split zoning is there. Maybe it's not ideal at this time. At some point, it'll probably get changed along, especially with those unclassified and highway service zones upon approval or adoption of the general plan. Staff will be going in and rezoning all of those base zones of unclassified and highway service. At some point, they'll go away. But nevertheless, that's what the request is. They don't wish to restrict the entire parcel, just a portion of the building, and it goes on, it goes a little bit beyond just a portion of the building. They actually only want to restrict a downstairs unit of an existing two-story building. So it gets a little more tricky, if you will, if you wanted to consider it. So basically, staff's recommendation is to not only deny the zoning amendment and deny, therefore, the administrative use permit, but obviously to deny the appeal request made by the applicant and the landowner for special consideration to allow an exemption to that distance requirement.
Thank you, Gina. Are there any questions of the Commissioner Gina?
Yes, I have a question about the 1,000-foot minimum requirement and the distance from establishments. How does, if any, if it does, the fact that it's next door to the Pizza Factory and the nature of that business play into the decision? I see that you've taken your distance requirement from the early head start-
Correct.
-but everybody that lives around there and has been in there knows that that's a, there's more kids that go there than anywhere else in the district, I think. It's, they promote it as a, you know, a place-
Correct.
...to bring your kids, and how does that factor in?
Well, I would have to agree with you in that I think there's a lot of kids that hang out at the pizza parlor, obviously, not only to enjoy pizza, but because there's a pretty good arcade there.
The arcade, and they promote it as a place to bring for birthday parties-
Right.
-after softball games, it's full of kids and their uniform, and it's, it's a kid's place.
And that very topic had been raised a number of years ago. This was prior to our current county council. And the determination was made by county council at that time that pizza parlors were not to be taken into consideration or be categorized as a sensitive use. But here again, that was prior to the current council that we have.
And what about the foster care agency? Aren't there, they're all minors that, I mean, you're a minor till you're 18 in foster care system. Wouldn't that also?
That has yet to be determined. But I think we feel that we have a really good determination on the early head start. You know, you could, you know, you could argue, yeah, we've got a foster care, we've got a pizza parlor, we've got a bus stop right around the corner, you know, there's all kinds of things that you might be able to consider as youth-oriented establishments. We have not made determinations on those other uses, but we have, we feel that there is a clear determination made on the early head start building as being a youth-oriented establishment.
Okay. Any other questions, Gina?
Is it fair to say that this is not just split zoning, but it's also spot zoning in the sense that this zoning CP would be different than all the zones surrounding it?
Absolutely.
Does that argue against approval of this appeal?
It could, yes. In fact, you know, we've often categorized, you know, thrown split, spot zoning into the same category as split zoning with causing the same kinds of, or potentially causing the same kinds of issues, if you will, with compatibility of uses, site development standards, performance standards, that kind of thing, delineation of. But certainly, but they do kind of go hand in hand with the same kinds of problems that will, could potentially occur with doing spot zoning as well as split zoning.
Just a carbon copy of the discussion we had a few weeks ago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's agent to address the commission, and just so that we've got an idea about time limits, we would like if your presentation could be under 15 minutes.
I think that would be just fine, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I'm George Mull. I'm counsel for Dave's Not Here Incorporated, which is the applicant operating the medical marijuana dispensary, which operates under Calaveras Medical Collective, as well as for the landowner, La Contenta Plaza LLC, who is the applicant for the administrative use permit and the zoning amendment. I'd like to thank STF for a very balanced report. I'd like to thank this Planning Commission for being so thoughtful here. This is a very different application from what you heard last month. We're not asking for anything that changes the general plan, and I'd like really to address what are, I'm sure, reasonable concerns from the commission. The planning staff has laid out the 650-foot distance from early head start and just sort of automatically said, well, that must violate what the electeds did when they passed the ordinance which regulates how and where medical marijuana dispensaries operate in this county. First of all, I'd like to say that this is a very liberal county in terms of how it approaches cannabis. There's an understanding that it is legal under California law. The voters have acted 20 years ago, as well as polling recently shows that in the state of California, more than 68% of the populace believes that medical marijuana should be made available. So we're not talking about some strange negative use, which is noxious in your county. You've already made the decision that there are appropriate places and that these are allowed uses. They are allowed in the professional commercial zone specifically. You will also have heard from staff that there is no intimation of any noxious use here. There have been no police reports of any kind. There's been no negative impact on the pizza parlor or any other youth-oriented establishment or any other use. It's perfectly compatible with the other medical uses which predominate in that center. So with those things out of the way, and only looking at the distance requirement and what the rules say, it's clear that while staff looked into this in great detail, that they are incorrect. The early head start center, according to STF, is a school. It's a preschool. The listed schools for which you have to be 1,000 feet away are elementary, middle, and high schools. It does not include preschools. It also then includes youth-oriented establishments and parks. When a basic tenet of statutory construction is that the specific guides the general. This has been the case since 1850 in this state and with case law consistently across the board. When you delineate which schools are covered by a particular ordinance and you exclude others, you're saying that we're not covering those schools. You then can't take a general phrase, youth-oriented establishment, and bootstrap that into a requirement that you have to be 1,000 feet away from a head start program or a preschool. If that were the case, the school thing is completely irrelevant. That's surplusage. It never should have been written, and we never interpret a statute that way. We interpret as every single word in there means something. Because if youth-oriented establishment means what your staff is saying it means, that would cover all schools. Why do we bother with putting schools in there? So the statutory construction is clear that head start programs are not included in the schools and then should not be included in the general. Now, this conversation I had with Joan Buchanan during the 2010 session of the state legislature, when her bill, Assembly Bill 2650, was out, we made the changes right before Public Safety Committee to limit it to kindergarten, first through 12 grade schools only, and to specifically not cover preschools. One of the reasons for that is the only legislative reason for even thinking that these uses are incompatible with an elementary school or a high school is probably unfounded, but still a fear that if a legitimate customer of a dispensary were to acquire medical cannabis, that they might make it available to a school kid, that they might have a sixth grader wander up and, just like some people purchase alcohol or a six-pack for a high schooler, that that might happen. So that was the legislative reason behind that. There is no one here with a straight face would say that we're concerned about someone going up to a toddler, a three-year-old, and selling them pot. That's not an issue. So the legislative purpose is clearly not to protect sales to toddlers. And if it's to protect sales to their mothers, well, I don't see that that was something that they covered. So with all respect, staff is incorrect. We are not too close to a designated use that's laid out as prohibitory use for this dispensary. So I would posit at this time that that reason for turning down the applications is incorrect and has no basis. The other thing as far as changing the zoning, you have to understand that we're asking for a down zoning. We're asking for a more restrictive use on a property which is now C2, to take a portion of that property and limit it to a commercial professional. You also have to understand that professional commercial allows dentist office, and if you want to make that same argument, Mr. Tunnell, about the pizza parlor, you could also say that dentists have a lot of kids. More people take their children to dentists than go themselves, because children, as they're growing up, need braces- growing up, need braces, they need to get fillings. So is there a concern there that by automatically saying that this should be in professional commercial, that there must be something noxious about it? You have to understand, there's nothing noxious about this use. And it's ridiculous to have in your mind the idea that there's some nefarious horrible thing that's happening. There were all kinds of ideas that having dispensaries would be nefarious and horrible. And the folks with whom I've worked for a long time, the police chiefs, the narcotics officers, all of them, no one can point to anything being wrong with a dispensary. They also, when we had changes in the states of Colorado and Washington for very broad use of marijuana, everyone worried that there'd be more accidents on the road, that there'd be more sales to minors. Those things have gone down. We have a 30% reduction in crime overall in Colorado. We have a 50% reduction in the amount of deaths from narcotics, mostly of which are pharmaceuticals. I don't hear from you, or I don't posit that you're thinking there's something negative about having a child's use next to a CVS pharmacy. But the CVS pharmacy is selling oxycodone, is selling psychoactive drugs, all kinds of things which are misused by kids and by other people in our community to a horrible extent, resulting in death. There are no misuses of cannabis that have resulted in death in the history of the world. So while I respect your opinion about wanting to protect children and wanting to be 1,000 feet away from all kinds of things, it really doesn't make any sense from a practical point of view. The electeds for whom you act as a sounding board and as a planning commission have chosen to have these in your community. The state of California and its people have voted to have this be a legal use in this state. That's the case right now. They also said, we'd like these things to be 1,000 feet away from schools, but they never included these head start programs. That's the case. So we do have a right to, under the existing law, be located at that place if indeed we can change to a commercial professional instead of C2. That's another anomaly here. Normally, a planning code would, for a use like C2, include as a matter of right the uses which are in a more intensive zone or a more restricted zone like commercial professional. In fact, that is the case here. But instead of using a phrase that says all permitted uses in CP shall be allowed in C2, the choice was, in drafting, to actually delineate those same uses. So the same office uses for pediatricians and orthodontists and accountants are laid out as saying, okay, those are allowed. So the only problem here is that when the ordinance was piazzed that covered where dispensaries could be, said shall be in CP zone. It didn't say shall be in CP zone and other zones that allow CP-type uses. So that's where we are. And we're not really then looking at this as a major change that changes the nature of that center. We're just saying that the downstairs space can be used for professional commercial use, which also allows as a matter of right a whole bunch of uses and as a conditional use of other uses. So it's not that restrictive, and it doesn't change the nature of the center at all. The other difference from the other applicant which you heard was we're not changing anything with the general plan. And also, one of the concerns that you had, Mr. Tono, with the earlier application was that because it's a tilt-up building and it has interior separations which can be moved, those are non-demised, non-load-bearing demising walls, that who knows what's going to happen in the future? In this case, we're talking about rezoning so as to put the existing dispensary, which is on the upper level of parking next to the pizza parlor and near everything else, to take it and put it downstairs around the way where there's separate parking and a separate access. And it's clear that it's a different level. It's not going to be changed. It's a clearly located place, and it makes sense. So if a dispensary ever leaves, you can put dentist's office or anything else down there. So while I understand your reluctance to spot zone, if it's called that, or to split zone, it's not without precedent. There's nothing about down zoning to CP which would have any policy reasons that would cause an incompatibility. And so we would ask for your indulgence here to allow us to move to a more discreet location, allow the change of zoning for that portion of the building to professional commercial, to understand that the restriction on head start does not in any way legally limit your ability to give those approvals. The difference here is we've got a wonderful landlord who has his own office less than 100 feet away from the entrance to this dispensary, who has no problem with running a very successful real estate company out of there, who has no problem with his other tenants saying there's anything wrong with this use. So if the landlord likes it, if the adjacent uses have no problem with it and like it, there really is no reason for staff to think that this is a negative use. So, you know, I would ask that you approve our uses so that we do not have to do the alternative of finding a separate place, separate landlord or purchase. And probably, as Mr. Moore has suggested, is possible, we could take an existing C1 or C2 building that was freestanding or its own parcel and come back and ask you for rezoning of that. And that's possible. And we'd go through all those expenses and ask for staff to get involved all over again. But we'd like not to do that. We'd like to stay a good tenant. We'd like to continue paying rent to a very wonderful landlord who's been very supportive of this county and not go through all of these machinations just for some technicality, because we can do that. But please understand, this is a very wonderful use made up of medical, of patients in medical need within your county that have chosen to use an herb which is much less harmful to their bodies than any pharmaceutical you could point to. This is not a place for kids on skateboards to come running up and buy something for recreational use. This is a positive, good place. And I hope that you can indulge us and give great consideration to our application. And I would ask for you to vote to approve both applications.
Thank you. Were there any questions? Was it Mr. Mull?
Yes.
Mr. Mull at this time by the commission? Mr. Worcester?
You mentioned that the way this marijuana ordinance is set up is different in that it prescribes only CP professional offices rather than CP professional offices and other less restrictive zoning. Would that be consistent with a desire on part of the Board of Supervisors to limit the number of these dispensaries?
I believe so. I mean, I think one of the things that planning commissions and staff do when they want to limit a particular use, I would say the example that comes to mind would be adult use, that they not only want it to be 1,000 feet away from what they consider sensitive uses, but that they'll also put it in an M1 zone, which for most jurisdictions limits the available spaces. By doing that, yes, there's a calculus which is applied. A thousand-foot restriction causes a 64-acre circle to not allow something. So, yes, I would believe that that might have been part of their policy, and that's why we're asking, though, to have an amendment of this particular location. There's nothing in their ordinance which stops somebody from asking that a particular parcel be changed to that down zoning of the use. We could do that elsewhere. We're probably going to be forced to do that elsewhere if you do not approve this. But what I'm asking is, this is a proper location with a very willing and accepting landlord. It's caused no problems in the past, and it just seems like a waste of resources to go and move and not necessarily meet any of your concerns any better in another location than this location.
Do I understand that your belief that the 1,000-foot requirement is based upon the notion that you are preventing sales of medical marijuana to minors? Is that what you think that it's based upon?
I know that's what it's based upon in terms of the state. What happened in the county here is...
You know that that's what it's based upon?
As far as the state goes. The timing here was that the County of Calaveras passed this after Assembly Bill 2650 was passed, which made an amendment to Health and Safety Code 11362.768. 113.2.768, sub-paragraph four defines a school as kindergarten first through 12. I was part of making that change with the author of the assembly bill, Joan Buchanan. I was in committee meetings with staff and also with the Public Safety Committee and then, you know, through the assembly vote. So, yes, as far as knowing the legislative intent from the state level, I do know that that's the case. Now, I'm hopeful...
Let me stop you there. How could it make sense that that was the only legislative intent when a child can't get a prescription for medical marijuana and go up and buy it from the store under any circumstances? So how was, how could it only have been the purchase?
Because, Mr. Tono, I was very clear about that. I was causing you to understand that there are potentially problems similar to with liquor stores, where a young person who's not of age would ask an older person to go buy a six-pack for them. That's the concern, not for the child going in over the counter and buying. On the other hand, what I think you're not understanding is that there's a great need for cannabis amongst children, for those that truly have medical problems. Cannabidiol, which is one of the cannabinoids which is very medically useful, is the number one positive drug application for seizures. There's nothing better. And 27 states now have passed specific legislation allowing cannabidiol, including the state of North Carolina yesterday, three weeks ago, the state of Georgia. These are needed drugs and medical supplies for children. But no, the issue is, yes, you can be a member of a collective as a child, but you have to go in with a parent. The concern was, if somebody goes in and buys an eighth, that they would then share it with somebody else nearby, the same as you would a six-pack. So no, I'm very certain of the legislative intent, and I'm thinking that if they use the same language and aped very closely the same language, 11362.768, that the county electeds likely had the same legislative intent in their heads.
Do you have another question on the law? Medical marijuana is legal in California. We agree, right?
Yes.
Is medical marijuana legal under federal law?
The state of the law under federal law right now is that while medical marijuana is still in the Controlled Substances Act, the Roerbach-Far Amendment to the omnibus budget bill of 2013, which would, of 2014, which was just upped again in 2015, 14 days ago, says that no resources of the Justice Department shall be used to restrict activities which are allowed under a state's medical marijuana laws. So as of right now, the answer is, there can be no federal action against a activity which is allowed under California's medical law. Secondly, there's a bill right now in the Senate which is authored by Senators Gyllenhaal, Booker, and Mr. Rand Paul that has just gotten the support of our Senator Barbara Boxer four weeks ago, that would accept from the Controlled Substances Act activities which are sanctioned by a particular state. That has a really good chance of going through this year. So right now, the federal government has backed off. They're saying, if a state has chosen through their own legislature to make this available to their people, we're not going to interfere. So that is the state of the law right now. Has the Controlled Substances Act been completely amended? I don't know. I had breakfast with Senator Rand Paul about five weeks ago, and we made some proposed changes that'll probably get this thing passed this year.
I wasn't asking what's in the pipeline, and I wasn't asking what DOJ's policies are with respect to enforcement. I'm just talking about the law.
Okay. Well, here's the law, sir. You are a subdivision of the County of Calaveras. County of Calaveras is a subdivision of the state of California. We have three appellate opinions in the state of California that restrict what you're talking about right now, in that you have no right to deputize yourself or any elected person or any employee of your county to enforce federal law. What, I can give you one example. The County of San Diego, after the passage of Senate Bill 420, refused to implement a key portion of that Senate bill, which said that the local Department of Health was to issue specific cards to patients. All counties are supposed to do that. That's state law. Well, they took it upon themselves, similar to what you're proposing, to say, well, it's against federal law, we're not going to do it. It makes sense. Maybe you're correct in that. But the court said, no, you're not correct. The court said that the County of San Diego had to issue medical marijuana cards to those who applied in accordance with Senate Bill 420, and they forced them to. That went up all the way to the California Supreme Court, which said that counties are not deputized to follow federal law when the state law says otherwise. So to answer your question, yes, technically, under the Controlled Substances Act, marijuana remains there. Practically, it's not being enforced, and under state law, you can't take that into consideration anyways in making your restrictions.
I don't know if I've been deputized, but I took an oath.
But you took an oath to follow the laws of the state of California.
And the federal government.
Yes, but you're not violating anything with that. We're not asking you to sell pot. I'm not asking you to do anything other than to follow the law.
Well, it would be, let's assume that selling pot is against the law, period, across the board. I would be violating federal law by selling pot. I would also be violating federal law by being complicit, by being a party to the selling of pot.
No, that's already been looked at. Electeds, you're not complicit in that, any more so than if CVS Pharmacy doesn't follow the Controlled Substances Act and check prescriptions, or if you have doctors that are out there, you know, writing pain prescriptions all over the place. People violate the law. You, as a planning department, are trying to figure out, or planning commission, you know, what are appropriate places for things to happen? You're not law enforcement. If this particular applicant does something incorrect and violates the law, they're still going to be subject to enforcement action. But they're not violating California law. And it's a lot of umbrage, I would think, sir, to think that you can step up for some personal reason and say that this is not appropriate or shouldn't be here when, across the board, the folks that elect you think that medical marijuana should be available to patients, more than 68%, albeit only about 50, 51% for recreational use, meaning for folks that don't necessarily have a medical problem.
We aren't discussing whether or not it should be available. We've got, we've got it available under various conditions.
Yes.
Not, not the conditions that you might like, but conditions nevertheless.
No, I absolutely agree.
And by the way, I do enforce the law here. I'm required to. We've got zoning laws, and you stick around, you're going to hear about them, that I'm charged with enforcing.
Of course.
So maybe we could bring this back around to really the issues that are before us today, which is the discussion about application of the 1,000-foot requirement, as well as the spot or the request for a zone change, if we could kind of bring us back around and focus on that.
Can I?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm listening to you talk about this, and I listened to you talk about schools and the children. And my concern regarding that is, I believe this is a youth center that's across the street. I believe that you should be concerned about those children across the street because there are times when people are leaving that facility under the influence, and that is a risk to those children. There's reasons that those parameters were put into effect. And when you talk about how our county, you know, should grant this, and then you want to quote state law to us and fed- to quote state law to us and federal law, your clients have not followed county law. They opened in 2003 without a permit, right?
No, just 13, just two years ago.
I meant 13, excuse me. And had they done it the right way to begin with, we wouldn't even be here. So, you chose, the client chose, to ignore our county's ordinance and open under their own terms, and now come before us and want to smack us down over this. I think the 1,000-foot ordinance plays a major role in this. We've looked at the zoning on this. We've looked at spot zoning. You know, in this capacity, if we're looking at saying, "Okay, we're going to-" we've provided an avenue for these to be legal in our county, and there are ones in our county that are legal. They haven't been told no. They haven't been told, "We won't follow state law." They've been told, "This is how we would like to see it proceed." And people have done that successfully without a problem. So, I struggle under that capacity. I also struggle with the dual zoning because in the spot zoning, we hashed that out a couple of weeks ago. So, anyway, I'm going to let it go at that for right now.
Okay. If I can address that. I absolutely agree with the fact that this county has been very liberal, and I appreciate that. And we would hope that we would be given that same consideration if we were to come back to you asking for a zoning amendment for a different building, because that is probably what it's going to take. There just are not available enough locations within the county that are professional commercial. We're just trying to stop going through what we see as sort of an economic burden that doesn't really benefit the county in any way. So, I appreciate that, and if that's the case of what comes out today, that would be our next step. As far as worrying about children, I mean, obviously, we worry about children, but there's nobody leaving this location stone. There's no onsite usage allowed, and it's not allowed under your ordinance either. The other thing about onsite usage or drugged driving that you're worried about, it doesn't really exist. I mean, in Colorado, we've had a major reduction in drug driving and in any impairments. And really, in talking with the Highway Patrol folks and other lobbyists from the public safety side, they all admit it's not a problem for driving. What they actually joke about is, "Well, somebody who's drunk will run a stop sign. Somebody who's stoned will wait for the stop sign to turn green." They don't really see it as a safety issue. So, you know, I understand and, you know, applaud your concern for children. We share those concerns. If indeed, looking at what I'm understanding from the commission, is that there's, in any event, probably not a lot of encouraging feedback as far as the split zoning. We understand that. And so, I would just ask you to consider our application, to consider it as a way to solve a problem without undue expense and hassle. But on the other hand, if you do deny, please expect us back in, you know, as soon as we can find another location, and we'll have this discussion again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mull. And before we ask members of the public to come up and speak, I might just say, I mean, we should, you know, medical marijuana is a hot topic. I mean, it's- there are a lot of advocates and there are a lot of detractors about its use and benefits, but that's not really why we're here this morning. We're really talking about a land use issue. I mean, it could be any other kind of use, a shoe store, manufacturer of shoes that, for some reason, by ordinance has been restricted to a certain zone. So, you know, we- again, I think we need to focus on the two issues that are before us today, is the specific requirements that have been placed by ordinance on uses like this one, and, you know, is there a reason for, you know, granting special dispensation or interpretation of the ordinance itself? And the other is the issue of the rezoning request. So, with that, I would ask anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak. And I might say I'm going to give you a five minutes maximum per person, per speaker.
Good morning, everybody. I want to compliment the Madam Chair for bringing the focus back down on this thing. You know, we've heard it before. You've heard it from me. You've heard it from others. This is a land use issue, and it's a very, almost immeasurable distance away from the state constitution to what this county can do and must do when it comes to land use. It has been before the state Supreme Court. It's been before appellate courts that juris- the jurisdiction, each jurisdiction, whether it be city or county, has ultimate total authority over the land use within their jurisdiction. So, the cloud of state law and what's in the pipeline and what's happening in Washington and what somebody said at breakfast has nothing to do with your jurisdiction and what's before you. So, I just wanted to say that again. You've heard it from me before. There's some information coming to you. The first one, I went through the ordinance 2830, picking out some of the requirements that are required, but sometimes they're kind of nested in the words. So, I went back and pulled out all, any requirement that's necessary and cited the chapter, verse, and everything for that requirement. As you know, I follow this issue a lot, and as I go from one file to the next, I find a lot of disparity between what is checked off, what gets done, what's been accomplished, what hasn't been accomplished, what seems to be forgotten, or some tortured legal explanation is why it doesn't count this time. So, I give you this checklist as something that maybe you take a look at, and it would provide some continuity for handling these pot shops. I mean, I hate to say it, and I don't want to be inflammatory, but we're not talking about illegal lemonade stands here. This is a toxic, toxic compound, and you have to watch it very carefully. And right now, we're not watching it very carefully. I'd like to compliment the planning staff on their analysis. Gene, if you could put the aerial, please. On their analysis, along with the analysis the planning came up with, there is a open unresolved code complaint, a three-item code complaint, in the planning department. We're looking for the commission and the board to address some of the issues in that code complaint. And if I might, I got one of these cool lasers, too. So, there is the pot shop right there, and there is the Head Start School right there. In one of the items of the code complaint, we bring up the fact that there is a pizza parlor with a very nice arcade, and you have photographs. You may not have gotten them all. My printer's pretty much burned out, so. Anyway, there's photographs of the arcade inside. In talking with the employees at the pizza parlor, Pizza Factory, they do get a large number of kids that go in there. And according to the ordinance, they congregate. Now, that word "congregate," and I provided a copy of 2830. I know you probably have it on your computers. If you look at that, you will see the word "congregate" is preceded by a comma and followed by a comma. It is a word singularly that stands alone. Congregate is to assemble or to gather. It has nothing to do with why they're gathering or what, whether they've been encouraged to gather. Additionally, at the corner of Hartvixen and Vista del Lago, there is a bus stop for the Calaveras Unified School District. In talking with transportation managers of all the school districts in the county, those bus stops are selected based on certain requirements that is part educational code and part just, you know, good sense.
Mr. Kelly, I'm just- you've got about a minute left.
I'm sorry?
You've got about a minute left.
Okay. And so, a school bus doesn't operate like regional transit or something like that. You don't- they don't pick you up anywhere on the street, and you don't pull the cord to get off. There are designated areas where children congregate to get on the bus, and then they're dropped off at their location where they are allowed to congregate on, after school. There are no rules on them. Those- the bus stop is within 400 feet of the front door of the dispensary, about 50 feet from the boundary, and the Pizza Factory, I believe, may share a common wall with the dispensary. It's that close. So, anyway, we're looking to have the board, or the commission, give some credibility to other uses within that 1,000-foot. And a pizza parlor with an arcade is a magnet for kids, you know? And if you don't want to look at it that way, well, I don't know what to tell you. And a bus stop is not a place where kids have the choice of being there. They must be there to pick up their bus, and they get off at their bus stop. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for getting your name wrong, Mr. McManus.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for getting your name wrong. Mr. McManus, I had called you Mr. Kelly. I'm apologizing.
Oh.
[laughing].
I'm uglier than he is, so he won't mind.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks.
I think we're good. Anyone else? Good morning.
Brock Estes from Valley Springs. And I don't have a dog in this fight. I've never been to a medical marijuana dispensary, but I do have a couple of questions. On the map there, am I seeing the Head Start as being beyond the Shell Station?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I'm familiar with that area. That doesn't seem that close. It may fall within certain boundaries. And what I have to suggest may not really apply, because I assume that the Head Start location in some way shared a parking lot with the medical marijuana dispensary. So, my question is this. Never having been in a dispensary, how is the marijuana packaged when people leave with it? Because if I allowed this, I would want to require that it be in some sort of a childproof container, like certain drugs and aspirins and things are, because I could see easily where someone could leave, be fumbling for their keys to open their car, and it falls out, and they leave it there. Someone finds it and eats it, you know? So, I don't know if it's just coming out in a plastic bag or not, but I wouldn't want that. I'd want it in some sort of a container that kid, a child, could not open. And for the attorney, by the way, these are not elected officials, but appointed officials.
Oh, I have my notes.
Okay. When you mentioned it, I just thought I would correct that. So, I would also think that if the question of the bus stop was a problem, that perhaps the hours of the dispensary could be such that it didn't open until after the children were picked up, which is probably somewhere around 8:00, and could close before they were dropped off, which I see as being somewhere around 4:00 in my neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
My name is Laura Most, and I live fairly close to that area, and there is a beauty shop at the end on the downstairs, and I guess that's still there, as to my knowledge.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Eric Glanville. I've been a real estate broker in the county for just about 26 years, and I just had a question since we're talking about land use. I wasn't clear, did you say that you have a policy against spot zoning or split zoning now? How's that work?
No, there is- there is no actual restriction against split zoning or spot zoning, but from a planning standpoint, it's not a practical thing for us to do. Creates issues regarding compatible uses. You can end up with issues regarding site development standards, the difference in performance standards, and-
So, you're trying to avoid those types of situations?
Absolutely. It's not unlawful. You know, there is split zoning. Other jurisdictions do it. We've done it in the past, probably for the last about, I've been here 18 years, and it hasn't been encouraged, at least in the last 18. The majority of the ordinances that I reviewed were all early, early ordinances, probably a good 30 years ago, that the split zoning actually occurred. Others that have recent, more recently occurred are generally those that were approved with subdivision maps attached to them that have yet to be reported.
Right. My point is, if you're trying to implement such a policy, I don't care what they're selling there, whether it's pot or shoes or whatever, but if you're trying to implement a policy, you should stick with what you're trying to do, rather than just say, "Well, this guy comes in, he wants to do a shoe store, and we're not going to allow it, but since it is a certain type of business, such as a pot store, we are going to allow it." It opens up, I mean, once you allow one person to do spot zoning or split zoning now, then how are you going to turn down anybody else that wants to do it? Very difficult. Go.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Marissa Peters. Forgot to sign in last time, so. My question is, I'm a little lost here. Are they talking about moving the entire store downstairs or just changing an entrance way, because the pizza parlor is right there?
We'll ask the applicant when he comes back up.
Also, I don't see, I've been over to the pizza parlor. I don't see people out manhandling, panhandling, and, "Hey, why don't you buy this? Why don't you buy that?" What was the law or whatever that states that they can't change it? That they can't move? That they can't?
There is no law against the split zoning of the property. We're saying it's not practical, and from a staff standpoint, we don't agree with it.
Okay. And as for, far as the children's preschool, they're not going to cross that freeway or highway to come over to this area. I don't see what the big problem is, because it's so quiet. It's so, I understand the school kids getting on and off the bus. I go to the doctors there. I don't see all of this. So, I guess I just need to wait, sorry, until I hear, is it the door they're changing? Are they trying to go in the back way, which I would think would be a little bit better then, so their door's not right next door?
No, I don't think they're, and I'm sure Mr. Mull can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that the relocation of the dispensary has anything to do with the adjacent uses. But currently, it's my understanding that the dispensary is located in the upstairs of the existing building on the end, next door to the Pizza Factory.
Right.
And they wish to relocate the dispensary to the bottom stairs, what they consider Unit 8, of the two-story building. So, you actually go around the building and enter from the rear of the building. It's actually in the basement or on the bottom floor. That's all they're asking to do, and if the zoning was appropriate, it wouldn't be an issue as to where the location within the building, because the distance requirement that we're arguing over today happens to be from boundary line to boundary line. So, it has nothing to do with the location of the dispensary within the parcel. It has everything to do with the parcel itself. So, if the property was appropriately zoned, it wouldn't matter to us where they locate the actual dispensary in the building.
Okay. All right. That's where I was kind of confused. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. My name's Terry Henderson, and one of my questions is, how has this business operated for two years without a permit? And also, we do have another marijuana dispensary in Valley Springs. I understand it's called Forgotten Knowledge. So, I was wondering, how many marijuana dispensaries are really needed in a town the size of Valley Springs?
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, at this point, I'd last, like to ask Mr. Mull if you'd like to come up and respond to some of the questions that were asked.
Sure. Just to clarify that last thing, yes, we are talking about moving downstairs. The only reason for that was, that was at the request of the landowner. If he was going to seek a downzoning of a portion of this parcel, it made more sense to put this professional commercial down below, which would, if we weren't there, would be appropriate for an accounting firm or for a dentist, whereas the upstairs, which is on the normal level of most of the development of the property, would be more appropriate for a- the development of the property, uh, would be more appropriate for a, uh, hair salon or, uh, some kind of a retail store. So, it was, it was simply for, uh, the benefit of, of the landholder themselves, and for some people, it might be better for, uh, the location of the dispensary to not be in sight so much, or have its own, uh, separate level.
I just want, you've got about 10 minutes, Mr. Mul, too.
Okay, I don't think I'll need to take all that much. To answer the question about Forgotten Knowledge, that's the dispensary which, uh, had a similar, uh, request of you, uh, a month ago. That request, uh, was denied, which likely means, uh, you know, unless there's a successful appeal to the Board of Supervisors, uh, that Forgotten Knowledge won't be there anymore. And so, this, uh, dispensary which I represent would be, uh, the only one left, uh, in the area, and probably for maybe as much as 20 miles away. So, it, it is an appropriate place for it, uh, there is a need for it, uh, to provide safe access, uh, to patients within your county that, that benefit from, from cannabis. I would say that this is not a noxious drug, this, this is not a, you know, horrible, uh, thing that causes problems. This is an alternative to other medicines, uh, which, uh, you know, can cause, uh, harms to the body or, or, or death, or, uh, it's also an alternative for many people to, to alcohol. And the social, uh, downsides of alcohol, I think, across the board, uh, are seen to far outweigh any possible social downsides, uh, from the use of cannabis. Um, so, while I, I do understand, uh, a hesitancy on the part of, uh, the Planning Commission to, uh, make basically an exception to the normal way which you would approach zoning, to allow split zoning in this case, so as to accommodate us. Um, I appreciate, uh, your concerns, um, and, uh, if that's, if that's the case, then we will have to come back here with a different parcel. Uh, we're trying very hard to comply, uh, with what the county wants and needs, and we'd be happy to work with you, uh, in the future.
Just one question was asked, how, how is the product packaged when you leave the store?
Right now, the, the flour, which is, if you were buying it individually, which usually is to be vaporized or smoked, is in basically the equivalent of what you would get at CVS Pharmacy.
Okay.
It's, it's that. And then, the other, uh, items, which would be edibles or other types of things, are in opaque packaging and, uh, put into a bag, which is then twice stapled, along with, uh, the receipt and recommendation over the top that says specifically, "This is medical marijuana," and, and cites some of the state statutes. So, there, there are indicia that this is not something you should just throw in, in the cookie jar at home.
Right.
Um, but even with that, even if someone might be off-put or scared by in, inadvertently having an edible, there's not in history anybody that's been harmed, you know, physically, much less killed. So, uh, we understand your concerns about that. The biggest concern is somebody accidentally ingesting something and, and being scared by the experience. But we, we like to take, uh, those considerations into account and, and ameliorate those fears.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, if there's anyone that has any further questions, we have like 10 minutes total, so please limit yourself to a couple of minutes to give other...
If I could defer some of my last minutes to the actual applicant, is that be all right?
Sure.
I think I might be wasting my time. I'm Brad White, I'm the actual, uh, property owner there. Developed and built that in 1988. We've had two different pharmacies in there, the medical has been there since that beginning. Pizza Factory's been there since the beginning. Um, can't think of much else, been since the beginning, it's been rotating in and out over the years. Also developed, built, uh, the Valley Oaks Center in Valley Springs. Uh, I've tried nothing, since I've been up here for 37 years, to do anything adverse to this county. Um, when I was approached for this, they wanted to know if I had proper zoning. I says, "I don't know why not." I says, "I'm commercial." I says, "We've had pharmacies in here, we've had everything in here." I says, "I don't know." And next thing I knew, I got sued by the county. That's when I found out I didn't have proper zoning. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. So, again, if there's someone in the public, we've got 10 minutes total, so if you've got something you'd want to add regarding this item? Okay. So, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation. Questions?
Just briefly, um, the, uh, the county, by right, has decided where it wants to allow these operations. And I, I appreciate that the people in this business have had a difficult time finding stores, uh, buildings, or, uh, spaces that are properly zoned and with the proper distances. Um, maybe there's, you know, maybe there's a shortage of those in the county, but it's, it, it doesn't mean that you can just decide to plop yourself in a, in a shopping center or strip mall where it wasn't, wasn't allowed. It's, if you're finding it difficult to find the, the right spaces, uh, that's a different problem. But it doesn't mean that you can just violate code for years, um, and wait to be, you know, chased down, wait, wait for it to come before a, a body like ours. It may be the comparison is kind of like, some, some cities and some counties don't allow, um, topless bars, some do. But the ones that do say, "You can only put it in a certain place, it has to be certain conditions," and, and they're strict about that, for reasons of their own. And for reasons of the, the counties, they've decided, "Here's where we will allow it." And, and it, I think these are good rules, but even if, if they need to be changed, that's the rules, and I think this commission needs to follow them. And, uh, so I'm in favor of the, of the resolution as it's written.
Are there, are there comments by commissioners?
Yeah, I, I can't help coming back...
Ted, microphone.
I can't help coming back to where we were a few weeks ago, and, uh, for some reason, this kind of reminds me of an issue we had here not that long ago regarding a golf course. Uh, I think it's one of those things that, uh, if they went that long without permits, uh, that, that in itself is probably a good reason to turn it down.
Mr. Worcester?
If, if we said yes to this appeal, this application, it's hard for me to see how we could say no to the next one, or the next one after that. And it seems to me that would be inconsistent with an intent to sort of limit these to particular places, which I gather there was such an intent. And then we have the split zoning and spot zoning problems that just exist. I think the pizza parlor and the arcade trouble me more than the Head Start School, just as a practical matter. And I'm troubled by just operating without a permit and under the wrong zoning for a couple of years. So, I, I'm not in favor of this.
Based on the fact that we've provided a legal avenue for this, and those rules were put into place for a reason, and we have to basically rule on the ordinance that are in place, I believe we have to follow the resolution and staff's recommendation.
And I feel that, um, a, a number of things. The discussion about whether it's a preschool or an elementary school is, you know, there's three parts to the requirements for issuing, uh, dispensary permits, and one does mention specifically the types of elementary, or types of schools. But the other one is much broader in that, um, it's a youth-oriented establishment, uh, where individuals who regularly patronize, congregate, or assemble at the establishment are primary minors. And I think there's no dispute that a preschool is populated by minors. The other aspect is the, is the spot zoning, in a single suite in a retail complex, and, you know, I mean, it's, the question at least here has kind of been asked and answered as far as, um, the majority opinion that, that's not really good planning, and it's inconsistent with the Board of Supervisors' Ordinance 2830. The other aspect, just from an economic development standpoint, as I mentioned when this was before, is that the site has already developed to its highest and best use. The, the, um, attorney for the applicant even said, you know, "We're downzoning," and it's, you know, from like a jobs and an economic development standpoint, you know, that's not really good strategy for, for that entire, for the health of that entire complex. So, I guess at this point, we're ready for the recommendation. Gina?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission pass a motion to sign Resolution 2015-011, denying 2015-40 appeal and 2015-007, um, administrative use permit for Lock and Tenet Plaza LLC, based upon the findings included therein.
So, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
One more.
Oh, sorry.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission pass a motion to sign Resolution 2015-012, denying 2015-007 zoning amendment for Lock and Tenet Plaza LLC, based upon the findings included therein.
Is there a motion?
Let me come in.
It's been moved?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Mr. Tannen. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion car- oh, and, and, no, he's, no, I guess not, so motion carries. Thank you.
We need, I need to remind, um, the applicant that this item is, um, is denied, and it will not be going to the, um, Board of Supervisors for a second public hearing consideration unless the item is appealed. So, um, if you wish to take this further, you have 15 days to file a formal appeal. Um, county code has a section in Title 17 that spells out the appeal process. Uh, if you don't want to go there, you can come over to the office and talk to me about it. Um, but you only have 15 days to file that appeal in order for it to go to the Board of Supervisors for consideration.
Thank you, Gina. So, I think we're going to take a short 10-minute break, give people the time to stretch their legs before we move on to our next public hearing. So, back to...
Give it to Mexico. I understand there's more than, there's more...
I don't know, it's like all this legalese has turned in.
We're going to start the reconvene in our meeting?
Common ground, that was his, that was his reason. Common ground.
This is his room.
Yeah. And my question for him will be...
So, I'd like to reconvene the Planning Commission meeting of July 9th, 2015, and we are moving to our next public hearing, which is continued from our June 25th meeting. And that is 2015-029A, Appeal of Planning Director's Interpretation that an asphalt plant is a permitted use in the general industrial M2 zone, and the no conditional use permit is required for an asphalt plant at Hogan Quarry. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Planning Director, Peter Maurer.
Good morning, thank you. Um, so this is the continued, um, hearing of, uh, two weeks, or, two weeks ago, where the Planning Commission declared its intent to, uh, take certain action directing us to come back with findings. Uh, that is what we have done, um, and share, it's really up to you to how you want to, um, handle this. We're, I'm hoping we're not going to reopen and re-debate the entire, uh, issue, um, but, uh, you probably will want to have some comment on the specifics of the findings themselves. So, um...
Yes, we will try. Everyone, this is a reminder to please speak clearly and loudly into the microphone. You're very welcome.
What you have in your packet then is a proposed, um, resolution with, uh, findings to support the series of, um, motions that you made, uh, two weeks ago declaring your intent, and, um, it's, uh, provided for you for, for action. Really all I have on this item.
Okay, so are there questions of Mr. Maurer regarding the findings that were presented in our resolution?
No, you're on 029, I thought it was, um, 010.
The, the resolution number is 2015-010.
Yeah.
The application number, the file number, is 29, sorry.
Got it.
It's confusing, it's the way we've done things here, and it's just...
Thank you for confusing me.
There is, um, a couple of minor corrections, um, on page four, uh, update on the, first, top of the page, second line, the very last word, uh, it should be "for" rather than "or." Sometimes my finger doesn't hit the F properly.
Good catch.
And then, on, um, uh, lower down, about the middle of the page, be it further resolved, number one, the second line, it should read, "Federal government through their proficient law-like agencies, not it."
Right.
So, with those two corrections, we would present the draft resolution for you.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr. Maurer right now? Okay. Then I would, um, and I invite the, anyone that would want to speak specifically regarding the findings in the resolution. That, that is the container in which we're operating this morning.
Colleen Platt, MyValleySprings.com. We just want to state for the record that we do not agree with the findings, and we do not agree with the determination that an asphalt plant is a permitted by right use in the M1 and M2 zones. We don't believe the findings adequately address all of the eight issues raised in our appeal. It took 95 pages, 95 pages in the staff report to justify your determination. That's how ambiguous our county code is. We believe our appeal is also supported by the county's recent determination of July 2nd, that under Code Section 17.42.035, that a hazardous material is used, and a conditional use permit is required for an asphalt plant. And this was in our appeal. So, we don't agree with the findings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, good morning, my name's Bonnie Newman, I'm from Double Springs. I brought my dictionary today, Webster's New World Dictionary of American English. Concrete is defined as a hard, compact building material formed when a mixture of cement, sand, gravel, and water dries. Cement is defined as a powdered substance made of burned lime and clay. When you mix it with water and sand, it becomes mortar. When you mix it with water, sand, and gravel, it becomes concrete. Asphalt is defined as a brown or black tar-like substance, a variety of bitumen, B-I-T-U-M-E-N, found in a natural state, and that's not in our case, or obtained by the evaporating of petroleum. A mixture of this bitumen with sand or gravel is used for cementing, paving, and roofing. Bitumen is defined as asphalt, found in a natural state, but we know we're not using anything mined, or any of several hard or semi-solid materials obtained as a tar-like residue in the distillation of petroleum, coal tar, or wood tar. We've heard bitumen defined as the binder. Well, the binder has some stout substance in it that we are concerned about. It's the bitumen that we're concerned about. Is it true that benzene formaldehyde, hydrogen sulfide, mercury, and cadmium is in bitumen? Then we need to talk about the processing of bitumen. The, the process is done in Elk Grove or Livermore, I understand. Who owns the factory that processes this? What is the process? Is it boiled? Is it baked? Uh, is it in ovens or boilers? Do the people handling this wear protective clothing or protective gear? Do the people handling this wear protective clothing or protective gear or any safety ish, safety gear? How does Ford Construction get the bitumen? Do they get it in tanks? Do they get it in trucks? Is it hot from the assembly line and it's driven to Calaveras County hot? What do the drivers wear for protective clothing? Once it gets to Calaveras County, is it reheated at this facility? What is the process? Is it mixed? Is it ground up? What are we talking about and how easily is it able to have fumes escape? And has everyone kept abreast of any and all studies linking asphalt and other petroleum products or the exposure of these products to any neurological problems? Seizures, tremors, palsy, hearing loss? What is the link? What about genetic and reproductive problems? Stillbirths, miscarriages, deformities, or sterility? What are the links? What studies have been done linking these substances to these problems? And finally and lastly, most important, how is it linked to pancreatic cancer as well as skin, lung, and any other organ cancers? Studies have been done. We should be aware of them, what the links are. Caltrans has lots and lots of asphalt facilities all over the state. Maybe this won't be a big problem, but when we can't get the answers to the questions that we ask, it makes us real suspicious, makes us paranoid, makes us untrusting. What safety tips will you offer to the people that live in the surrounding area? If they start smelling tar, should they stop breathing it? Should they stop breathing? Should they get masks? Maybe they need to move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brock Estes from right across the street from the plant, about two tenths of a mile. I spoke to you before on a kind of an emotional basis, talking about how this is going to affect the kids in the neighborhood where I live. And Mr. Tuno, I want to thank you for focusing me because you made very clear in your speech that you have absolutely no concern for that. You are concerned strictly with, is this legal? That is the question as you framed it. And so I'm going to address only that issue, what I said before still stands, but I'm going to address that. My background is in arbitration. I have no legal background other than what I've gained in working with a union lawyer on many cases over the years. And I've appeared before some of the top arbitrators in the state, including Thomas Pianella. So I can tell you that if I went to my union with this case, I would say to them, we don't even need to use our attorney on this one. I can win this in under an hour. And I'll tell you why. We're dealing with words in a code, a code that was revised. Initially, the words asphalt and concrete were in the code back in the 60s. Somewhere around 1986, the word asphalt was removed. And now the relevant portion of this code reads as follows. Concrete mixing and batch plant, comma, ready mix. Are we in agreement that that's what we're here to decide?
In this session, we don't debate you on these-
Okay. No, I'm not asking for debate. I'm just asking if I'm quoting correctly from the code as you understand it. Concrete mixing and batch plant, comma, ready mix. Now, if I were going to arbitration on this, I would say the bar for including asphalt in this is that you've got to assume that where they say "and" batch plant, that they mean an asphalt batch plant. However, comma, ready mix. It's nonsensical to believe that that ready mix refers only back to the beginning of that phrase, concrete mixing. Because if it did refer only to that, it would be up there. But it says concrete mixing and batch plant, ready mix. So ready mix has got to refer to batch plant as well as concrete mixing. Well, why is it there? Now, unlike Mr. Tuno, or like Mr. Tuno, I do a lot of Googling. But unlike Mr. Tuno, I do more than that. And so this morning, I called the Mine Safety and Health Administration. I became aware of them when going from the attorney's document where all the tests that had been done in Siskiyou County were done by Eagle Peak Asphalt and Paving. So I Googled them and I found that they'd had a recent fatality where they had been investigated by the Mining Safety and Health Administration and found negligent. It didn't give me a lot of confidence in the company, but it made me aware of the Mine Safety and Health Administration. So I called them this morning and I said, I have a pretty simple question for you. We're debating a code in our county and we're looking at the words concrete and asphalt and the term of art, ready mix. Can you tell me how that term of art relates to both those words, concrete and asphalt? And the answer I got was, well, it certainly applies to concrete and cement. And I said, does it apply to asphalt? And the answer I got was, I've never heard of it used with asphalt. Now, I'm going to give you the phone number because you can take a recess and call them and get the same answer yourself.
Mr. Estes? I don't mean to interrupt, but you've got about a minute left.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's 707-447. Need the glasses. Now, they connected with something they call an attendant, but I made sure she called in her supervisor because I really wanted an answer. And the answer is, never heard of the term ready mix used with asphalt, commonly used with concrete. And I did a lot of Googling of different combinations of those words and I found that to be absolutely true. Asphalt and concrete are like apples and oranges. They're both fruits. And concrete and asphalt are both used in paving, but they're used in different ways and they're produced in different ways.
Thank you, Mr. Estes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Laurie Morgan. I'm from Valley Springs, California. I live on Silver Rapids Road. I wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said in this meeting last time. First off, I believe you approved placing this plant in the quarry there. You all agreed with that?
We agreed that the quarry, the asphalt mixing operation is a permitted use by right in the M2 zone.
Okay. Let me ask you, how did you determine that asphalt mixing and concrete mixing are the same thing?
We had a lot of discussion about that and that's not what we're here to speak about today, Mr. Morgan. We're talking, no, we, we spoke about that in detail two weeks ago and we found that it is a permitted use and so we are restricted today to talk about, even though I'm giving a lot of allowance for other sort of variance from that, but we are strictly talking about the findings that the commission made and were then reported back in a resolution to this commission to take action on today.
Okay. Well, you listened to a lot of people here last week when I was there. Everybody said, I list all the concerns and you talked about concrete and asphalt mixing. And your whole thing was based upon that they were the same, no problem. In this code is that concrete mixing. They're not the same thing at all. If you have any doubts about that, you need to talk to a materials engineer or a chemical engineer.
Thank you.
My name is Lou Mayhew. I, I think you should be reconsidering your action here. I think when the language is as ambiguous or simply not there, that the default position should be to say so rather than find a connection and find a meaning that is not there. So I, I think you should be reconsidering this. I think Mr. Maurer did make, take a discretionary action by stretching his search for a connection. So I, I think it should be over, or you should really reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Robert Wise, and I live up right in the same vicinity. Reading the general plan, just in the opening statements, you have a responsibility, a stewardship to looking over a whole lot of things, including the economic and cost-effective expansion in our infrastructure. And I don't know if you've addressed that and concerns, and some of the concerns I have right away, besides just the wear and tear on Silver Rapids Road and the highways. Because there's going to be some. You're talking about a lot of truck travel and trucks tear up roads. You're talking about if there is, and heaven forbid what I'm going to say here, if there is an accident and one of those trucks spills, what does our fire department need? Have we equipped everything? Are we doing this safely, looking out for public safety? Who's going to pay for this? Kind of, kind of questions come up. There's been a, and I looked this up online too because Googling everything myself. Blue Ridge had a similar case happen with their asphalt plant and they ended up with a 56% drop in property values. We need to look out for the economic well-being of our citizens that live in this area. There's a lot of things that we are looking at that's in the, in your opening statements, in your general plan that talks about all these things, promoting orderly, cost-effective expansion of infrastructure. We're not looking to tear down a community and, and drive property values down here. We want to maintain it. We're just getting over this recession. We're finally getting our pants pulled back up as far as economically and property values and have this come back and basically pants us again. That's a major concern. And of course, the health issues that you've heard about. So I think you need to reconsider that definition that we talked about of what an asphalt versus concrete is. And you have, I believe it was done in 1978, I've read that, we had plain language that says, concrete mixing and batch plant, ready mix, as you pointed out, was, was what it was the M2 industrial zone was zoned for. Never, the word asphalt plant was removed at that time. And I think we need to stay with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello and good afternoon. One thing you want-
Could you please state your name for the record?
Art Jacobson.
Art, thank you.
I'm a son of a chemical engineer, Robert Jacobson, PhD. Worked out at Chevron Research. One of the, one of the considerations is the Clean Air Act and the MSDS, page eight, on asphalt. And these asphalt teens is one of the gases that comes off of it. It is known to be a carcinogen and think on that.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Janice Facit from Valley Springs. It's clear that the code was ambiguous if you needed 95 pages to justify your conclusion. And what makes it even more clear was at the last hearing when Mr. Maurer stated that he chose to interpret the code in the way he interpreted it. So just by the act of him choosing that shows me that there is another choice. The other choice would be if there's ambiguity for something so impactful on our community, it should have been brought back to the people for direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vicki Rainkey, Calaveras County Republicans. I want to say that we do agree with the resolutions that are before you that, I'm not going to get the words right because I didn't write it all down, but that there shouldn't be a need for a full-blown sequel on that plant, as been stated. I know I sent you all a copy of a study that was out of North Carolina and it was on hot asphalt plants and there's a lot of good information in there about whether they're polluting, what the dangers of the chemicals that are being used. And it's been shown that the chemicals are in such small amounts that unless someone, I guess drank the bottle or something of the chemical, they would be harmed. Otherwise, they're not harmful. And I just wanted to, again, re-quote this. Included in this report is a link to the Federal Register dated February 2002 that removes asphalt, cement manufacturing, that's the words that the federal uses for this kind of product, from the list of hazardous air pollutants. The EPA study has, was done on the asphalt plant in Los Angeles, California, and one in Massachusetts in the late 1990s. And based on this study, asphalt, concrete manufacturing plants were removed from the hazardous air polluting list. So they did extensive studies. They said that these studies were done at asphalt plants that produced asphalt continuously, not the shorter amount of times it might happen here. So, you know, a lot of that fear about the polluting and the dangers, just, I'm not finding them. And, and again, you know, just logically, we put this on our roads, we drive on it. People work in that industry. I don't see them with hazmat suits or anything. So OSHA also regulates the industry from a worker's perspective. And again, there's very little that they even have to say, like if you get something in your eye, you need to wash it out. Well, that says that on my chemicals at home in my, under my counter. So anyway, I just want to make sure that as you're deliberating this, is that that seemed to be the big issue, whether or not this has to go through a full-blown study. It's been done. We know the answers to it. And anyway, so I just want to encourage you to, to go ahead and, and let this go through and thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Terry Henderson and I would like to say that I am a Calaveras County Republican and I do not agree with the report that this woman has just said. And I am sure she does not live in the area that is being proposed. So just for the record, I'd like to state that. Thank you.
Just for the record also, my name's Laura Most. I'm a registered Republican. For many, many years, I knew nothing about this until I heard Vicki address it at this meeting two weeks ago. I don't agree with it. I live in this area and I just want that for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Nancy Furtado from Valley Springs. I live across the street from the Rock Quarry.
Nancy, you were walk, could you just say your name again? I'm just thinking of Annette Lader. She's like, I heard Nancy.
Nancy Furtado. I live across the street on Silver Rapids from the Rock Quarry. When I Googled asphalt plants and hazards to humans, it did say that respiratory was, problems were the number one issue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Terry Bedoin and I received a Planning Commission notice of public hearing. Okay. I have a question. It says pursuant to the Government Code 65009, if anyone wishes to challenge the above-listed issues in a court of law, the challenge must, may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. So if I don't, I guess I'm asking, what do I need to do to preserve my legal rights in the future?
Carrie.
Is, is the fact that we all are contesting your decision and the fact that we think that there should be environmental review, I guess publicly stating that, does that preserve my legal rights?
I'm not qualified to say what your legal rights are and are not. I'm sorry, I'm not an attorney and I'm just-
That's okay.
Yes.
When I spoke to this board last time, I invited any of you, all of you, to come and have a cup of coffee on my deck. Nobody took up my offer, but last night I did take a picture with my iPhone from the back of my deck. Can I approach?
Sure, just give it to Annette and she'll pass it along.
Sure, just give it to Annette, and she'll pass it along.
That photograph is, again, wasn't with a high-zoom lens or anything, that's just with an iPhone off the back of my deck. You can see the area where the hot batch asphalt plant is being proposed, it's direct line of sight from my deck, okay? I'm a 30-year county resident. We raised our kids here, okay? My wife and I built our little dream home, okay? It's not real elaborate, but it has a nice view. Unfortunately, part of that view is now going to be of a hot asphalt plant. If you look at that photograph, can you really look me in the eye and say, "Terri, you and your friends sitting on that deck will not be breathing hot asphalt when that plant's in production?" What do you think? Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd like to show them.
Next person?
Hi, it's Art again.
Excuse me, sir, you've already spoken.
Art Jacobson, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Is he allowed to preserve his- I don't know. Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, it's- Yes, well, that's, you know, that's his prerogative, and we are asking that everybody speak only once. There's a lot of people here. You've got five minutes. I think you can probably cover the issues within that time period.
My name's Jan Hammaker, and contrary to what the Republican woman said, there are many, many more studies that support the health dangers that the chemicals in asphalt production produce. So, and also, I do believe last time she quoted from the industry website, they are not going to be honest, I'm sure. I feel like the decision was wrong, as many people have said, because of the ambiguous nature of the language. And I also, I also feel like, as we move forward through time and communities change, that maybe, I don't know what the process is, but why are we having to stick with something that isn't clear? Why can't new decisions be made, new wording that is clear? Why, because they changed that several times over the, since 1961. Why at this juncture, when it was so unclear, could it not have been, said, "We need to define this better for the future, for now"? I don't understand that, and I don't know what the process is. And now, it seems to me that this asphalt plant is going in, it's, you've determined that they have a right to operate it, and I don't know that there's any going back on that. So, I'm super concerned about the environmental impact, the property value dive I expect to take. So, and probably my main question is, I wasn't able to stay for the whole length last time, but I did watch it on video, and I heard the attorney for Ford state that there was not going to be an odor, the only odor would be from the trucks passing. I don't know how that can be. I'd like that answered. And basically, she said it was going to be a clean operation in a nutshell. So, my question is, why is there an appeal to the CEQA? If you're running a clean operation, what have you to fear? And honestly, we would love to know that they are running a clean operation. I don't have a problem with industry and growth and all of that, but let's be honest, and quite frankly, I don't trust them. It makes no sense to me that they would be appealing this environmental reviews if they're running a clean operation. That's just simple to me. And I feel like, and also, the one or two trucks, a woman who lives on Silver Rapids counted and said she, 22 trucks went by in 45 minutes. That's now with the quarry. So, I'm not sure I can believe, I wish I could trust this company to be telling me the truth, but I believe that the impact of this plant is going to turn out to be far more than it seems now. And also, looking at your general plan, it looks like this county could grow quite a bit. There will be need for more asphalt. And I really want this environmental process to be in place, because it seems unconscionable that a company could operate with impunity, absolute impunity, to do whatever they want with no restriction. And if you're running a clean operation, you should have no fear of that. And that's really my basic stance.
Thank you very much. Next person?
My name is Mike Rourke, Valley Springs resident. And there was discussion, and I don't mean to point fingers or be rude, brought up about an older study where they were found to be no toxins or problems, but on this, the Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League, dated October 23, 2007, which is a little more recent than the 90s, chronic toxins that are released into the atmosphere based on 225,000 tons of asphalt per year, carbon desulfide, 682 pounds, methyl ethyl ketone, 13,650, tylenine, 17,150, xylene, 9,975, acute system toxin, formaldehyde, 617 pounds, styrene, 3,780 pounds. Carcinogens, which I'm pretty sure everyone knows are cancer-causing agents, these are things that are released in the air annually. Benzanine, 64 pounds, trichloroethylene, TCE, 4,000 pounds, petrachlorothiocyanine, PCE, 13,000 pounds. The discussion was brought up about our concerns about our children, and marijuana dispensary, and the relative closeness to that. And we're pumping this out, not just for the kids, but for our entire community.
No clapping, please.
So, maybe we really need to reconsider this for the life of everybody in our county.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. Boy, what a job. I think before us, it's not the asphalt plant being improper zoning. I think it is an appeal to a requirement from the environmental organization, calling for a more stringent examination, like an environmental impact report or something along those lines.
Mr. Segala, that sounds more like our next item on the agenda.
Well, we have an appeal by Ford Foundation in front of us now?
No, that's at our next hearing.
Oh, okay.
This one has to do with the being permitted by right, and the findings contained in the resolution that staff prepared for discussion and action by the commission this morning.
I thought this was already approved.
Well, it was, it was, there was a consensus, a 5-0 vote by the commission, that yes, it's, they concurred with the director's determination. But the staff then went back after our meeting and prepared findings that showed, the concurrence that we had with this determination, and why we concurred with that decision. And that's what's under discussion this morning.
Okay.
It's the findings and the resolution. And then next, we'll be talking about the Ford appeal.
Okay, well, so, repeating the same arguments that we've been hearing, apparently is justified. And so, in that case, the one question is, is asphaltic concrete, asphaltic concrete, or is it something else? And if you go to your specifications, when you have bids on public works contracts, not now, but even over the last 50 years, you'll find the term for the asphalt, asphaltic concrete, AC. I know this, because I used to be a building, a construction inspector at San Francisco Airport, and watched millions of tons of this stuff be placed. So, the term is asphaltic concrete is correct. And you could look at any specifications that you would have for public work contract to confirm that. As far as the asphalt being dangerous or a hazard, this is so, so obviously not true. They wouldn't use this stuff to line water reservoirs. They wouldn't use this in hospital parking lots if it were a danger. And if it were a danger to the employees that handle it, they would have respirators. There's 11 organizations that the company is required to follow, and one of them is OSHA. And so, quite obviously, it's not a danger. So, with that, we support the plan director's decision.
Thank you.
Joe Kelly, just a couple of questions. Has the quarry ever stopped production? Has the quarry ever been subjected to environmental review? Because we don't see, we've not been given any of this information. And I ask that because I was looking through a timeline, but I want to go back to something when I asking about environmental review. The Federal Water Pollution Control Act, the first start of the Clean Water Act. The original 1948 statute, the Water Pollution Control Act, authorized the Surgeon General of the Public Health Service, in cooperation with other federal, state, and local entities, to prepare comprehensive programs for eliminating or reducing the pollution of interstate waters, tributaries, and improving the sanitary condition of surface and underground waters. During the development of such plans, the development of such plans, due regard was to be given to improvements necessary to conserve water for public water supplies. Now, that was 1948 when that came into play. 1924, June 25, after the Petersburg Settlement condemnation proceedings, construction of the original Hogan Lake and Hogan Dam began. September, 1930, September 11, construction completed. 1948, the Federal Water Pollution Control Act. In 1960, what, and this was all because Stockton had fear of flooding, so they did all of that. Then in 1955, December, the Calaveras River flooded. '58, flooding returned. 1960, November 10, 1960, US Army Corps of Engineers commenced construction of New Hogan Dam Project, 1963, New Hogan Dam completed. And 1965, New Hogan Dam Reservoir filled to capacity. When I asked that, first question, has the quarry ever ceased to be operational? There are, there's an ordinance in this county that states that if it stops for one year, then it comes back, and everything is new. So, I think this needs to be looked at from that perspective. I would also say, and another issue is, it was back when Wes Hodgson was a member of the Board of Supervisors, and he went around to the people in the La Contenta, well, the Rancho area, I believe, and he asked them what they thought about the, this was when, I believe, was Tigre was coming in, and asked about the, what they thought. And there were some conditions that they thought needed to be approved. And one of them was basically, no working on holidays, no working, working eight to five, don't work nights. There were a couple others, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring my whole packet of stuff with me. But I think this is, goes beyond, and I think if, if there was, and there should have been at some point, since 1948, should have been an environmental review of some sort that this county participated in, where is it? And if you don't have it in your drawers, your files, then you don't have it, and something's wrong.
Mr. Kelly, you've got about a minute left.
Thank you. Or, we could all go down the dump and look for it down there. That's where a lot of regulations and things permitting things go, in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mrs. Ramble, and I live on Silver Rapids. Before this meeting, I went to CCWD, and I tried to speak to Joel Metzger again, but he had some paperwork for me to pick up. Anyway, he explained last time, lengthy, we talked several times on the phone, and I saw him, and he told me that they, CCWD withdrew their appeal against Ford Construction Company, because all the environmental reports were going to be done, and they were looking out for the community's welfare. They were also subjugating, and they had a signed contract with Ford Company. What happened? Now, they're, I'm looking at the agenda today, and Ford Company here is going to come before you and say they don't have to do that, they're not required to do that. What happened? That's all I'm wanting to say, because yes, our property values are going down, our health is going to go down, and it doesn't matter that they're putting a brand-new medical building in at the VA, that was explained by their CEO. So what? We're all going to get sick. We all know we're going to end up, one way or the other, gone. But why pollute this nice area? I don't understand that. And I don't see what you guys were thinking when you approved all that. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation on the findings contained in Resolution 2015-010. Any discussion?
Other than the, what we've heard there this morning is a repeat of what we heard a couple of weeks ago, and we hashed it out for about six hours, I think, something like that. The language that we're going to vote on is simply a codification of what we decided, what we came up with. There's been some criticism of the length of the report that Mr. Maurer made in support of his position. I disagree with the comments that are made about that. I think he wrote a very lengthy report, because he knew it's a hot issue, and he wanted to make sure everybody knew what the facts were. And I guess if he had written a one-page report, he'd be criticized for that. But instead, he went to the nth degree to tell everybody, this is the supporting information for his decision. So, I, I mean, I think we should respect that kind of work, not criticize it. And I would just, I was reminded of some facts that were brought up here today. A couple nights ago, I came back from Sacramento and passed by a paving crew on 99. And we've all passed by paving crews all the time. Usually, they do it at night, because they don't want to interrupt traffic, but it happens in the daytime, too. And the crews are out there laying asphalt, no hazmat suit, no respirator, no oxygen supply, not even a dust mask. The, lastly, the report that was cited by Ms. Renke was not an industry report, it was the EPA. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have comments?
I'm just looking for my resolution. Is there going to be any changes on the resolution, or is it going to be written as standard?
Other than what, other than, she was asking if there's been any changes to the resolution, other than the two Mr. Maurer spoke of earlier, the, more of the, yes.
Yes.
May I add something? It's been suggested that the code decision, the zoning decision that was made a couple of weeks ago that we're voting on now to complete, was the end of the story with respect to environmental review of this issue. It's not. It was written in one of the publications from one of the organizations that finding as a permitted use, this operation in the M2 zone, would result in, quote, "no environmental review." Not true. Absolutely untrue. So you're going to find that out, that if you stick around the rest of the day.
And I would just reiterate the comments that Commissioner Otano said. The decision before us was if we believe that a asphalt plant was permitted by right by looking at the code and trying to interpret what the Board of Supervisors meant through their various amendments to it. And it is also true that there is, in our next hearings, we will be discussing SEQA issues regarding this proposed use. So I guess we're, are we ready for the recommendation?
So staff recommends that you adopt Resolution 2015-010, upholding the director's determination that asphalt plant is a permitted use in the M2 general industrial zone.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Let me add, would you guys like to start now or take lunch now?
If we start now, what could we get through?
I don't know. Probably just Peter's presentation, maybe.
Take an early lunch, get back early.
And then they'll have a brush in their mind when Peter starts.
Okay, so what time do we have to come back?
I'm sorry, we're just deciding when to have lunch. Nothing really big and heavy is going on up here.
It's a good call, in my opinion.
Yeah, so what time, like 12:30?
Okay. Rather than get started on our next hearing and interrupt it, we're going to break for lunch now, and we will reconvene at 12:30 sharp.